Honorable Yankobo Inshia, Me ye brother, and to the Facebook viewers, Ni pa omo shen yendosu pa, omo bebede bisawasem, Biyansa nekabu, me wa kola oye yarofor autistic. Na America ge, mi hu omo bebeda apano, Omo diya tutu kwe ma, omo de ma ye, Ema a bad time for no, ye ni se ye made yare, Pa omo boye ye. Gaana ye u di bisan, me wo video biya miss Shrawa, Usi befin, si me pesen bi bisan ose, Se yankobo omo na ye thoma wa, na obe ye presidenta. E diya de, ena obe ye, e diya fa kola, Omo ake mu akan. Facebook viewers ose, galam se, oye den e woku. Ena yuta omo ni de tumasi so, eden na be ye. Intepi question, eyye biyansa beke yar bakon, Ena the Facebook viewers so, moa otiye miye, E da sonabo.
Yo, uh, thank you very much. I then say, Ghana, the health system, We need to change a lot of things. Na question ye I want to say, Ukraine, Ghana, we don't have any provisions, It taking care of autistic and autistic in the forum. But I think say, we should, as a government, Make a policy say, omo wa, ome ye the same forum. Say, u di me, eyye policy, ema obe kosu free dia. Then, the same forum should also be given opportunity. E ye medical care, or medication, Surprisingly, I see a lot of cripple, Omo tutu huicheyo wa, omo sre sre sika e wa moten. Minwa alaha, obi etni ekoko, ekoye guma, eneska. But ome ya, o sre sika wa Ghana, you don't blame me Because opportunity has not been given to you. I think say, it's a very good question. And for those say, we see how best we can do Also to help disabled, a very very important. If I question is ay, yene politicians, We take care of such things, obi wa, But in a bar, but, or still a problem ya, U di me kanlu, then we have to help. To me feel say, say, etni ma obi health insurance. Na oye medical attention, extra efforts should be udi, Ah, more contributions should go to the disabled forum. Na per eshno so, omo wa ha yar kakra. Na me brino, etni ma omo education, To udi zo omo yini e brechi stuff, Na omo ti ye, whereas ah, ene ya me o, Eko mesis owe yar me ba, mi se, pa mibi ba oye autistic. Onen na, e wo mo omo, opura desense, E ana oko me ye ope seno, ye no, system no, Should be able to help. And at least, national health insurance and free education, Actually I say, anything the government can focus Also oye, obe ti ye, etni ose, etni ewa. And make sure say, we put a policy in place To help disabled. So, you know, anybody who, omo eye zehmat, The things they can do, you have no idea, And you will give them that opportunity. Two, Galam se, personally, personally. I feel say, Ghana for, ebete ali, small scale mining. Ah, omo say is you dia, I agree with them. And Ukraine, the way they are destroying our water bodies, If you say, omo, ni na, they should be registered Under one body, man yen regulate, And make sure say, they don't destroy our forests, They don't destroy our water bodies. And odi, o say is you pa dia, I disagree. And yo beke, yo onthoma, me ya onthoma. But me ba, me ni ka say, yebe gu omo yuma, Yebe gu galam se, se dia, onko say is you, But, yebe register, eli galai se, amamo, Ye da ma o training, papa, say ye, ah, oko na ba na omo. You see, mining activities that are going on, You don't see what we see in Ghana here. Having di na, yemkwa yede, yekos say is you, And sahselo, yes send oye, we have to regulate. But I'll be honest with you, if you want the problem Of Galam se to be solved, it to be solved, But read my lips, most politicians are involved. Most of them, they so, MDP, NBC, omo ni na ye Ghana se, And mti, ema omo, ama omo ka, waits, etni epa, Me me ya Galam se, etni na kati ose, for register, Small state mine, now so na say is you dia, I'm afraid, the law would deal with you. Because, etso, the way omo si say is you, And maybe be kuha, Ghana, ye da ko bo to is you wa bo jili, He said in a talk omo, we should not allow that to go on. And yo omo ka, Galam se, me ye, yebe kuwa yuma, Yebe make sure say, you all go under small state mining. With God likes, evidently are protecting your forest, Are protecting your zoo, everybody, anyone in problem. Because I feel say, Ghana for which they making the money. With this Galam se, Indians, Arabs, They come in and give them money, omo omo ka say is you. I went to Dubai, about 275 shops. Ni ni na oka diya se, go to Ghana, ene ba, ah. How? On di, yebe regla, I say, I don't know, That's a scam, make it Ghana for wa, I don't have a problem at all. Et di, many two he say, ose, reglet in your mind, And make sure say, you all go.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Revo, uh, We only need, if you have a question, Please join the queue here. Only one question, please. Cause we. Mention your name, who you are, What kind of such thing do you work with? Thank you.
Uh, a youth employment question, this also important, one minute. You see, I feel so guilty say, me my girls, six. Omo ye invest in, our America. And then I've started going around educating the youth, We call it guardian council, ah, research hall. The problem is, sometimes, obi bami your school, Say yo yo, business administration. Na oye ni ma yuma, isisou for six years. Me ni kati ose, ene ekoko kula, odi na meto, Sa me ko ye, advertma obi onyugezi, e, ye bro, Ena nko ka say, Homestar Bread, papa pa. Okay, the number of people are, eko to, Homestar Bread. Ko, oye ye, oso ye, comedian, na ko fa bro do, Egu, wii wu suze, now they are be concerned as you say. You see the difference that you make. Obi ya ke, a ba ye guma, me be police, me be immigration, They saturated, so, and they are educating themselves. Oye ni ma yana, desa mi, na meto oye, e wo, street is so, eh ok, E si me sa so, up to secondary from three, Na meto, ye speak a chocolate, that's a nice, ye is raw. Na me na, ye speak a chocolate, that's a nice, ye is raw. You see, that is the beginning of a businessman. That is how I built, eh, great, great brother Kedwa, Omo, ta na omo, omo de, na me wa pek to kwa, And omo omo ye make eh, so, pa me, na meto oye ma wa street so, Ye ma find ya, and here we are today. Et di, youth na kasa so, they have to take their destiny Into their own hands. Then again, government, policy buying, ena ye di ba. Many few say, MDP mistake eh, say, say napko. Napko wa, ofa obi kotna, obi ye guma wa, many sis, Oti owo ye guma, me ya money says eh hundred, na oko fi. That amount of money no, oseka ye be establishing industries. Ema, even if you employ out of the hundred thousand, Twenty thousand permanent workers square no, And eventually come down, oye ye say. So is employment, employment, employment ah, Let's just say, industries, industries, industries. We need more industries. Obi wa ose, don't praise the yar guma, I disagree. One district, one factory, eti say agro process, na ye ka wase. Say, ye, encarrytivo, na ye beli private sector ye ya, Relating, ay, back. And me ma, example, question ome say, very good in the center. I have a problem with development bank, our me ye. What be a develop? Why didn't you put systems in place For why development bank no, to give out the loans To the businesses, a ebama interest no akofu. Now ome ya komma, commercial bank feature, You have interest of two percent on the eight, which is ten. And the commercial bank, the development businessman, May a good bear for a team, can really compete With Indian campaign loyalty loan of two percent, three percent. American company loyalty, you see, so right there, No industry, and therefore, our youth don't have the jobs in there. And many few say, they should give lower interest To the businesses, so that they can employ more people. And so that there will be no stress on government, Except, waste of the police, waste of immigration, Waste of the fire. So, and ye I think say, soft loans to businesses no, Ebe jini ama, industries ah, ba, amaya creative more job. And that is what I stand for. Say, be make sure say, interest rate up of. Because, obi kaji loan of thirty-two percent, ene. Thirty-two percent, eti ye guma wa, omo me ya waiting At thirty-two percent. And di, may not be, if you say, we should be bold, And say say, sweet money no, ah, yebe si si a guy be be, Say. For high man, but me income. And me many few say, industries, industries, industries. That is the only way ah, to get to the.
Thank you, Honorable. Me pa mo chop, one question, we don't have in our hand, but I'm ask you. Your name?
Thank you. Uh, say, you see, yaka sa, na di ba bo enti, Em si ama, yebe tu trasu, my, my, maybe say one question. Edi kari, ya na kasi, me diya me ni se, Nkuningye be ya odi ya, eti kwa sina, oba abaywa, Esen, bi bisan, bi bisan we. Me ye sports person, eti na, na kosport level. Na ni se ya Ghana call World Cup eh. If you say, Ghana, ina, enka, eh, danek, oh, because Ghana wele match. And to, ikusisa sa, enka, ye continue wele ya. Enka, me ome be si si Ghana alone with sports no, eh different. Then so, aban diya ba, ni me ya ode she sports, wa na ye bitwey. Onshada, enfa le ni ko ho, ba si ka fe, pump people black stars alone. Ah, ye, me si si no, ados. And to, wada roma, ye me di obe, oba, sports sector. Eden obe ti ye ya, ebama ye rent ye no, Eko renko do bebe so, be tu tu kai, ako bo wa mano ne. Da ni se, you look at legs no, yebe me ye to produce talent, That were black stars, na enka man no so, eti, a good even quit eh, Da ye suya diya, wada roma, eh da so.
Yo, thank you. Um, say, ose, Ukraine, oka sports dia, eh ye, Ya more president, the kutowa du, Abas. Ose, astroters, a ye si si, and there were a lot of constituencies ah. A man you, you know, a developer, interest in sports. I'll tell you the truth, I don't miss words. You see, we're here praising Amas. Et ni pa obo, sports, eh wa Ghana, eh ya Amas. There's no government, I'm telling you the truth. You see, o insu fao means, very evil guy, Eh destroyed, we see ya, thirty, the way he was rising. He completely discouraged this, obi ya ope so, kosport no ye. And di, what do you want government to do again, When your hero is Amas? Ah, what deliberately, was he ogo go Ghana sports? You see, eti, ye o problem, ba go here ni ya na na, oso wa diye. And then you, you know, oko mozo, Ghana gasa, me ya bojeh wase. Last year, kwa ye, they eight, astroters, the eight constituencies. So, and then interest no, eh, some they give. But interest no, ba ose blaster, a ye si ye ya. Me, say, in a pregnant, ah, mozini ye interfere, But, o kuranso, ota say, sports ye ye ya. What I know, he say, team owners no, eh ni na, I don't see why they should be part of the G F V. No, I disagree, say, owners of the teams, eh ya part of G F V. I saw one gentleman, ose, a complete, defend the living mode. Ose, a complete. Ah, no, ose, a gentleman, you have somebody like Lamte, You have somebody like.
Baba Ramane.
Man, man.
Baba Ramane.
You know, pa say, me pa jase, man say, continent player, Ni ya Benjiro, ose, Lamte oto wa, speed ya wa ni ba, ni ya Benjiro. Ote, ote say, because owners of teams, you know, Eh, say, omo ko fongwa, eh, omo komo. You can promote sports like that. And many few say, I, team owners, eh, eh, American eh, oha. But Ghana, oko status eh si ya ba, yes, you don't interfere, ye interfere. So, if this is the way we have to go, but president's status ah, And if you say, owners of American, eh, ye no, Or if we get a separate, independent body, Na team owners, omo yo yuma, if your player is good enough To be among the black stars, we call him. But, mainly we eh, the team player eh, eh, na omo komo diye, It will not encounter.
Karaboni, thank you, Honorable, na na hi ma.
Your family, na na ya ye, who are, the first, Honorable, Pa cho, the question that I'm in this. Oka businesses, eh, I'm into businesses, I have three businesses in America here. Mainly African markets, mainly systems, that's right. Queen beauty, praise God. Now, oka ma ya menitilpa, because of, eh ya, starye, E kwa ye, e fasoba, eh ya, eh, be pa ta be pray. E kama eh, yobudi eh, ye, eh, drone. So, o, oye contain a be forty feet ah, oye ni ya, more than thousand cry. I na two, man came, so, o de man came, ba say, yom si ye guma. Say, a ye ya ni bi cry, eh kama wa, oye ni ya ma ni bombe sizi. Et o obe, edi ya, dwa ke ya dwa, ye ma, eh, ifo de, bebe ye. It's palace code, o pa, eti ya na, obe sizi, ayafa, eh, business is. Ga ye, riya ni ma, African.
Yo, uh, thank you, uh, African riya ni ma, I think say, With what I saw, three businesses. And like, I like, the madouse say, you know, make you know say. So, make can last ifa, may last ifa. If we don't conform to international practices, Ah, make sure say, would decide no, omo be spray, Asahselo, ah, ekoko, etni stay, asahselo one year. Et u diya ba ye, na akoko, make can, maybe a baby ana akoko. Health wise, it is no good, which we both to say say, Ye di su, would decide eh. But, me make sure say, ye ya, could provide out of it. But, Ukraine, Bayrenwa eh say eh, one lady was talking to me ah, The time period ah, ode she po Bayrenwa ebetu, America happen, That was a factor, ena, refrigerated containers no, ome ba. Omo regulate eh ye, because I'm into coasters, eti I know. You see, I have done experiments in Holland ah. Holland, it comes store young for eight months. The same temperature, obi store potato, because potato is in one season. And so, and short to, American market, and na European market. Because every farm, our warehouse ah, obi blows, At the temperature, eti say ya, potato, ose, asahselo. The same metal, ena, o she po, eh, dia ba. I was say, refrigerated eh, eh, blow, Abiano, at the certain temperature, Eh, ma ye say, eh, da ose, asahselo. But, we have to deal with Mexico and other shipping lines, you know ah. Omo si si, eh ba, you see, government has not come out To defend traders, you know, eti no, eh, ose, Shipping lines, eh, buye, eh, ma, omo di, eh, yoma le ma. We need to challenge them, and make sure say, Omo so, international practices, you know, omo di so. Omo ami ba, oka diya say, ni yoma di, six months, And sa, they be do, koma, omo we ya no, ose, eh, charge. And there's no government policy, eh, different eh. Pa, omo zo, omo ni ya, because omo no, ome be kuwa, na government, wasa sa. Pa, omo ye gu, asise, ni pa na, oye yuma, ome pasu ni ma. Ena ma jose, me no me, me ye business, eti no, me ni sa, yoma ni na ma, Ye ba, eh, be make sure say, shipping lines, you know so. Omo so, we inspect, temperature cry, omo di Bayrenwa guma, Eh, be ba America, eh, ba, eh, go no guma, eh, ye go no guma. Temperature no, ah, refrigerated, eh, you know, containers no, Eh, di ma Bayrenwa ba, is also a factor. Ah, say, heat, heat ba, omo sa, two months, and sa, eh, eh. Na, omo, say, hadi ya say, you know, ose, diya five thousand four hundred dollars. Ama, truck, a be fa, ako twelve, you know, sad things, Will make you say, da no guma.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable.
Uh, me di de, I see, for say sa, say, omo be ti ya say, say, Eh, yes, eh, the cassette, eh, be be ti. Me ye, na me ye test, come vice president, two thousand eight to two thousand nine, Academic year, Kofobiya, Politic. Uh, ye me ome say, asise, say, Brana wa Ghana, eh, ye ye ya for, But eh, eh, say sa, eh, eti, maybe say say, eh, na, ye me ome say, Eh, be me, eh, this for, you were well established, sonabe ye, robe ye politics. Eh, eh, this, eh, this, add double star. Na ma baso, ye, oso ma prosecuting, even a single so. Et na, me diya say, ye, eh, pa, I say, odi ya, eh, eh, politicians, Odi ya, eh, eh, na ye ya, as a Ghana, they say, as no ba, eh, this, No ba, eh, this, you know more. I make you wa na, me ye, oshi, me direction, o ma ne po. Ove si, ya, eh, ba, ne su su, me, eh, say, odo, omo be ko, ode, As obe pele, ana so, obe alaino, eh, eh, because a man who no guri ay, A man who tro ka, eh, po eh, eh, ose, ye soremo, ma, you know. Et di, me pa mo chop, many few say, o, is straightforward. Oba so ah, odi so be di, ayadi ala be ya, precious. Ena, say ya, point this is to, nita iti, be campi, sa, na be la be campi ah wa. Make me pa mo chop, odi giya, ye ma pe pe, eh, eh, na ni kweni, Oyu si fe new, odo ye new, oye eh new, oye be ne sto, odi si ke so go. Because, odi ba, ba, odi si ko be new, eh, blocking kala be rey, o future. And moreover, oka sa, oka sa ba, authority, me wo, uh, a little proposal. The boss say, me ye, me wo politics, eti de, ye na, Mr. Yarakam. O, eh, Israel, say, kala ni tro SSU, um, high school, eh, we, omo traffic ah. Many few say, institution is not a lot, but me need to, you know, eh, eh, a little better. And di say, ni pa ba, dome, na ose, Ghana for share that dome. Ni pa ba dome, na omo tro SSU ya, omo tro SSU, you know, omo tro eh ya. And ka omo, eh, fan pop, omo base is one train wa, no one size wa. Because, I don't know, I wonder, oye two thousand and eight, Eh, eti, o ni pa ni di gi gat, before Abakor University, oba ko be ya, O ni pa ni gat, oba odi to, odi kine, eh, di ti, eh, 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 diya, eh, wa me ma. But, maybe say, say, ya Ghana, ye, eh, Ghana ma ye, eh, koma, Make you wa na, me ya oshi, eh, 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 good for eh, They say, eh, Karen's really, the worst Karen's is the world. Now, eh, this is, eh, eti, like, maybe other countries, eh, eh, di na sa si ya na, me da wase.
Uh, well, I didn't get a question in there, but we can tell a pain, a pain, until.
I think say, and Ukraine, we have to be fair, me, Me, make can crush, we have to be fair. Honorable has done very well, but, eh, di me be so, I'm going eh, You know, they are set. But, example, be a ma eh, say, eh, this, argue double summary, eh, for me. You see, you are blaming only politicians. Why are we afraid also to criticize the judicial? Make you want to have a business. The number of cases ah, eh, diya ko court. How many have done? And omo ti, am I judgment? How would you say say, eh, good for us, you go and talk to Chi, just to say, Case me, eh, 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 odi, odi, ome ye, eh, judicial, eh, eh. So, omo so, prepe, prepe, omo so, eh, eh, yuma. Now, politicians, eh, so, eh, ya yuma, that is how we can build the nation. But eh, here, one side, eh, say, eh, politicians, eh, we leave other corporates, Ah, omo ni na, eh, and a man problem, no, ever. Many, many, me ni na, eh, come, you know, say, eh, good for us, has done hundred percent. But ova yini, ye di ra eh, omo to, in a way, Because, we are breadwinner, eh, ovi. And ya, good for me, eh, ba, eh, and da o sister, ono wa, breadwinner. Opo no, opo wa, o na oye program, ena, bra, first call, you get from Ghana. First call, Abenya, ope, eh, 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 bra, ena Grace, Abasiyo, eh, eh, school feast. Uh, sister, ena girl, Abasiyo, eh, eh, school feast. And then you don't hear all these things, these are some of the benefits ah. Let me say, every year, secondary school, men, three, a friend, eh, eh, and Omo be sunlight, and then, obi ye, eh, 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 ovi. Although, me obe diye, but, eh, wa me. So, one district, one factory, eh, make eh, we see plant, Eh, costum in thirty-two million dollars. Thirty-two million dollars, the duty would have been about thirty-five percent. But because it's under one district, one factory, men, three are eating one million dollars. Because they want to promote local business, men. And di, if you say, eh, ye be biya ma, president, eh, good for a young guy, eh, eh, But the present, eh, eh, because, eh, eh, yeah, Yanis, eh, eh, say, Let me see a for, eh, open up, that is where the big agencies. But then, yuma, pa eh, Ukraine, you don't have an option, so, eh, 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 eh. I have to speak the truth, eh, you pa, eh, di diya ye, Eh, odi, u di we fa, eh, di si cry, eh, eh.
Thank you, Honorable, thank you. Mommy?
Good evening, President, candidate of Japan. President, so far, da yo, poku me, we are fancy yo, omo kunwa, yasantina. Uh, with Western region, Western region, I think, yeah, oh, gonna be after Western. Ye ma, sa so, omo ni na, many, many, I met you, ota kazi no, Omo produce CK man, o produce eh, 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 Yanson. Asas, every country, omo ni ya, me o to deba no. Asas, owa, oda, regression, eh, eh, sa, oka. Na, many, many, this eh, eh, I was no worry, oda, o Western, eh, eh, regression, eh, eh, ota kazi. This, first one, na, mama, I'm gonna make peace ah, oye de, eh, be na say, Resources is in ah, ota kazi, eh, Western region, eh, be na say, no, oto wa, oda wa eh. More kataba, more kame, sa jet, and na, it's like, there's nothing in Western region. And many ope, eh, eh, ota kazi. Eh, be piya, eh, kokon, ye, ye, o, o, eh, o friend, eh, Siberia, me ni na, Western region. Eh, be na say, forty, eh, 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 oto wa eh, was, eh, the man, eh, 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 because eh, president. Ba ba, be say, forty, omo to wa eh, o Western region, was a, eh, 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 eh. This is no model, this is not there, this is not there, be, eh, 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 eh. Eh, 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 eh.
Honorable, wala wa na, mpro pa.
Yo, Tavrami, first, first of all, Moa, so, eh, madam, Bato, eh, eh, once more, eh, part of the problem. Part of the problem, because, me di, oila, eh, 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 eh. Oil, eh, eh, a lot of. Try to put down strategies here. Tavrami, asas, the way ah, president before, eh, discover, eh, oil, omo si, shoot two prices. All these oil companies, you know, they say, omo, tikodi wa, eh, eh, eh. They say, make eh, I don't know, eh, madam, president, eh, eh, komishin, Tavrami, harbor. Eh, 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 eh. Again, GMDS, madam, Bato, eh, eh, GMDS, we are moving the headquarters From Accra to Tavrami, and it's almost complete.
I tell them say I tell you, we are going to be a happy people A happy I'm not by the way of sure You may do can I say Chair, you know me now say here Fifteen years, we are going to go to chair Regardless, we are MPP, we are NDC We are chairman, we are president You have all day I saw what they can handle Honorable, where the young question they foot who And to Obama, I teach Obama in there go my Oh, we are go good we are here now say
Yeah, honorable Men's may yeah, but many Maybe they will buy or they only because They know when I may I call her They found to do it for you They part show, Kakarabe person in this I say They can say my way to for me Yeah, the new map back on That what the new man they buy See via Kafra, eh, see eh, and ah, and some of three years Obama, I will be the agent to a diwe Eh, will be opedia, no, the hatosu No, I could cheer with it What cheer with it, I read And the man I'm can say Un said eh, how much yeah Yeah, chat you Hey, what Eh, nee gee eh, yeah, how much eh, they'll be sa cost of me be what can I The visa agent be what can I Oh, person what you know they say Oh, I'm always listening now Eh, gee, it's in eh, it's in the public Eh, my young one say Maybe I give away in back on Me, Kura Tena, me cheer ten cities You can I look cheer twenty cities Nah, you be back with Rono Yeah, the man eh, the buyer Yeah, new eh, boy put here, yeah, gee Nah, agent, nah, come, nah, customer visa, I'm going to check eh, the name eh Could he eh, yeah, try eh, pay eh, yeah, dear bro Opo, opo, I could cheer Well, cheer eh, yeah, found yeah man Eh, gee, I tell you, eh, bit you eh, yeah, gee, this is I, yeah, man, oh, why Eh, bra, this is okay, so we eh, they Obi do a man you see Yes, no Maybe me would cheer you say Minimum, obi cheer eh Can they be cheer eh, yeah, come on today Ah, maybe I say so, this is a question Maybe no, I say Yeah, see eh, you know man Serving containers Eh, this is truck usa Truck, eh, part show, gee, yeah Serving containers Eh, this is truck usa Eh, cock bay two weeks Eh, do you know man eh Supplier know, eh, the, or true say Steel plant equipment Nah, me home is eh, eh, block And ah, bricks Fence, ah, it mean melting steel no And sound ah, there, iron roast Oh, would the bricks Be a fun one, eh, very insulator Eh, man, steel no, eh, none So eh, a part of the fence eh, oh, they buy Eh, nah, we say, or true say Eh, yeah, steel plant eh, you know Obi eh, question, eh, be a no war, dead Eh, who say, I near, I near Quran, oh, my message eh, we only free in the area man Eh, would you, oh, my just serving containers, let's you know say One report to correct A penalty of three hundred percent Nah, so I'm fuck bricks eh Maybe, maybe eh, we are one year, maybe eh, we are America Go to hell, eh, the major human ego Just eh If you listen to me, I'm a cool master I spoke about this What do you know map ah Customer officer, eh, we say we are enemy So I point you, you know, so I journey, I'm proud Yes, they were eh, oh, we see me moona And so, without trade as you know Oh, yes, he got, eh, go cheer, work eh, he got Because darling taxes eh, eh, you do free say eh, they see who But pretty to eh, yeah, oh, my dear man Just eh Twenty sixteen, eh, the top pickups, nah, eh, yeah, NPP Eh, chair, just the demo Quran Eh, but the top used pickups, eh, what you guess They told me as low as three thousand dollars Yet you are duty of five thousand dollars Of the pickup eh, a cost of three thousand Wow, I thought, eh, PDP, I know We're going to do something about it First year, eh, so eh, you were yeah, so And then they say, I guess you answer They still there And I know Men's in my business eh, that's why I'm asking him to vote for a businessman So actually, it's way yeah, I know Because eh, because serving containers are car I near eh, free India Bricks eh, free India Nah, no agent, you know from here Eh, be eh, hundred thousand, oh, so I'm at the so, eh, four hundred sixty nine Still missing me cheer So, eh, now also businessman Why can say so Who was who cheer eh, who was who cheer eh What did you know man eh, call You could have called What you mean, is that agent, he said, no Eh, you know man say, nah, nah, give man Duty say, eh, attracted You just don't Eh, mode you say, oh, maybe you know man, we go down eh, I got them Yeah, just slap who duty eh Eh, no, I beg you now, I'm mind Eh, do you know man, eh, president eh, oh, eh, oh, eh Who so, who bad you, you know man, so I free agent, eh, this I say Maybe you know man say, yeah, man Duty say, eh, that you say Okay, eh, do you know man, eh, eh, you are, where you know, eh, they are more than But if you do us
Thank you, honorable Ah, we have last question for now Last question, we have another artist coming Ah, last question Calm down, calm down, let's behave well We will come back again on the questions We are cutting across the program The questions will come again Calm yourselves down Thank you, mommy
Honorable Me part show Eh, they back one, eh, hey, Ghana, mama Business, yeah, worker Eh, been eh, say Port hono Yeah, teach eh, yeah, turn port And this eh, for a turn port Eh, this eh, see eh, we be be, eh, eh, come, be eh, eh, that for sure Oh, be for sure, port no, yeah, turn Yeah, bet eh, eh, this eh Obi, now, eh, we buy eh, 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 share eh, when you eh, what's eh, I wo Ah, what do eh Eh, this Obi, eh, yeah, eh, you man, no, eh, brain no say My quarter eh, should see me go fear Ne, you know man, I dey go Here eh, eh, here, yeah, to say demolish Nah, Ghana, for the, yeah, no, yeah, three weeks eh Nah, would eh, tie eh, man, nah, yeah, worker, no option Nah, we got turn for four, four, four Nah, but this eh, for a true sure Oh, would eh, you know man, back Ghana, eh, turn eh, form eh, you know man eh Me, this eh, the one eh, give eh, I read, eh
I'm sure my mother 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 Oh, my mother is so good Oh, my mother is so good I'm sorry, dear, I don't know what you're talking about I'm sorry, dear 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 I'm sure my mother 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 I'm sorry, dear 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 One, two, three, four Yeah, we need ya My name is Epo Come on I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm sorry, dear I'm sorry, dear I'm sorry, dear I'm sure my mother I'm sorry, dear Because I'm a man Because I'm a man, because I'm a man Because I'm a man Because I'm a man, because I'm a man Because I'm a man, because I'm a man I'm sorry, dear I'm sure my mother 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 I'm sure my mother
I'm boy, I'm boy, I'm boy, I'm boy Me, 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 I'm in the house, yeah
I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man
Daddy, I'm a star, I'm a star, I'm a star Thank you
I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man
You're a star, right? That's what I'm saying, I'm a star, I'm a star I'm a liar, bro, this guy, bro, I'm a liar We are in a building, we are, we are in a building, we are in a building This is why we are here, we are here to dance Oh, yeah, my mother, yeah, who is she?
Ah
Okay
Ah, ah Oh, I am, I am, I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I am, I am, I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I am, I am, I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I am, I am, I'm a man, I'm a man Two, three, let's see, ah I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, oh, 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 oh I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, oh I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man One, two, three I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man
My passion I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man
Two, three I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man This is a round of applause From the bar, you go say it I love sound off for real I'm the one, ain't no other people Rocking on the rock song 2004, we are We are the top Please love me Me, 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 please love me Please love me I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man Thank you, thank you, thank you 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 I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man I'm a man I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man Friends of Ken Global Eh, Madame Sissila, what's in any I'm a chief war What make a sack of grass Friends of Ken Global Thank you, Sissila
Thank you, very soon Friends of Ken Global
We have a country Justice for all Friends of Ken Global We will help our country Justice for all
Yo, I'm sure for Friends of Ken Global, man, you know Any more All Friends of Ken Global members Friends of Ken, Friends of Ken Friends of Ken, any more We are for people, ha, who's mumra We are for them Friends of Ken Global I'm here, nah Yeah, you know, they are a cast, they are all a good team And you're best of us, I'm not a cast, you know And can, come on, I'm a friend And not a cast, you know I'm sure for, you're a cast, you're a friend Now, I'm a what, I'm a can I'm sure for, you're a friend You're a friend I'm sure for, you're a friend Hey, you're a friend Friends of Ken, for a cast Mama, I'm a friend Now, you know, so now, we see, you're ma Mama, I'm a friend, when you know, so, you're a pack And can you swear, you're a friend Mama, I'm a friend, and you're ma, casta Yes, yes, uh-huh, yes Friends of Ken Global
Friends of Ken Global Justice for all Friends of Ken Global We will try for our country Justice for all
I mean They will crop, they will crop, they will crop Now, 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 I'm a friend, now, now, you're ma, you're ma Ever, but, I thought for You're a friend Friends of Ken Global, and ma, and I, you're not a You're not, now, mama, you're a Yeah, you're in, nah, you're a squad Ah, and tell me, or even, eh, a pop Honorable You're ma, and you're this, they not for, and you're Nibibiya, and you're in, and you're So, you're, oh, you're, you're cool, you know You're cool, you know, you're say, I'm a champion, I'm a, you're You're, you're You're, you're Now, you say, you're cool, you're a casta, you're You're, you're say, you're a pa, eh, you're, you're You're, you're You're a pa, tell me, or even, eh, a pop But, I'm a And you're in, I'm a, you're a chance, eh, you're So, you're, oh, you're And you're, and you're, pa, you're You're, you're ma, you're gonna And you're, you're, you're Now, you're who say You're a pa, and you're, and you're, eh, we're Oh, my, oh, you're, you're for And you're, you're for More for Eh, for, eh, ma, eh, po You're a pa, you're, you're Eh, po, so, we're, we're Now, so, we're, eh, you're, you're So, we're, eh, you're, eh, 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 you're Eh, you're, eh, you're Eh, you're, eh, you're But, you're, you're So, we're, we're Now, we're, so, we're, we're So, we're, we're Now, we're, we're And you're, you're say, you're, you're You're, you're Eh, you're, you're Eh, we're, we're Now, we're, we're Now, so, we're, we're Oh, my, so, I'm sure Eh, and you're, so, you're Eh, say, you're a pa Why, you're, eh, a pop Eh, we're, we're You're a pa, you're a You're, you're Oh, do I, nah, man, oh, say, you're So, you're, you're And that's funny, nah Nah, Friends of Ken Global You're, you're Eh, ma, you're a pa, go far Eh, go, ma, ma, ma Now, we're, we're Oh, you're, you're Eh, oh, my, you're And you're, you're Eh, you're a pa, you're a And you're, you're You're, you're Eh, you're, you're And you're, you're Eh, we're, we're So, you're, you're Eh, we're, we're And you're, you're You're, you're Eh, you're, you're Friends of Ken Global You're, you're You're, you're Yeah, yeah, you say, yes, yeah, yeah, I'm a I'm a And you're, you're You're, you're Eh, Confornaty Hospital Now, I'm a, you're, you're Now, you're, you're Eh, we're, we're Eh, you're You're, you're Eh, you're, you're Eh, you're, you're Now, we're, we're You're, you're So, Friends of Ken Global You're, you're You're a pa, I'm a You're, you're You're, you're Now, we're, we're Eh, ma, you're a pa You're, you're Eh, I gotcha Now, you're, I gotcha Uh-huh, so, Friends of Ken Global, you're a pa, you're a Oh, why, you're, you're As, eh, you're a pa, we're a president We're a do, we're Now, you're, you're President, you're a And you're, you're As, eh, you're Pedro You're a friend, I'm sure for I, I'm a colleague, oh, you're a Now, so, I'm a, I'm a Eh, you say, you're, you're Pedro, so, I'm a Oh, Pedro, Pedro, good, you're Oh, why, yeah, yes, eh, you're a Eh, Benesa, oh, who's up, I'm a Uh-huh, that's what I mean Yes, uh-huh On a, he's special hospital So, who you have, best hospital, pa, there Best care, there, eh, a fan, eh, there For community too Eh, yeah, eh, from the Uh-huh, sprinter's road So, we're, we're Eh, you're, you're Oh, you're a man, bad, bad, eh, special hospital Yes, yes What they, you're a Eh, did you, you're a Eh, eh, you're not, you're a Eh, eh, special Special hospital Eh, you're a Benesa, bad, you're Eh, eh, also for, I don't take Eh, eh, you're a pa, see, eh You've been to, oh, you're And when you find a friend Eh, nah, mama, mama, you're Friends of Ken Global You're sure, time, but you're a Piero, Piero, you're a The pier, I'm a We're not testing
Friends of Ken, on any day, they're born global Better, I'm a job, I'm a job Ah, Bishop Adonti, Watim, Ebe Maya, closing remarks First of all, we thank all of you for showing up God bless you with your views and points and ideas That you brought on board May God richly bless you Remember, we are voting for a businessman Not a lawyer or a doctor In the history of Ghana We have never voted for a businessman And this is the first time To vote for a businessman and change the country We voted for doctors, lawyers, economics The country has gone nowhere This is the time to vote for a businessman Who can create jobs for the youth So, who name, eh, man, say, you're Eh, eh, mama, what do you know, when you're When they grab one from the left Care and USD We're voting for my pa, will you? I'm a job, I'm a job, I'm a job I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man Honorable I'm a job, I'm a man, I'm a I'm a, mama, mama, I'm a But, I'm a job, I'm a job, I'm a I'm a, I'm a And you're, you're I'm a job, mama, I'm a I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a But, I'm a job, I'm a job, I'm a I'm a man, I'm a man, why? Ken, I'm a job, man, you're more, eh, honorable, you're It's the way you give Uh, uh, I'm a job I'm a job, I'm a job, I'm a I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a So, I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a You're a good one, Grace, you're a You're, you're You're a pa, you're a Eh, I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a Amen, I'm a, I'm a But, still, I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a Eh, you may, eh, eh, you're I'm a, I'm a So, I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a You're a pa, I'm a, I'm a So, you're, you're So, you're, you're Eh, what I'm saying, you're a Eh, you're a Eh, you're a Eh, you're a Now, you're, you're Eh, ma, Ghana, you're You're a friend, you're a President, I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a Oh, the president, I'm a, I'm a World Cup Eh, but, I'm a You're a friend, you're a Exactly, man Eh, you're, you're Now, I'm a favor Now, I'm a, you're a Eh, what I'm a, I'm a You're a, you're The president, you're a Eh, I'm a, eh, 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 eh I'm a, I'm a 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 Eh, nah, nah, nah I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a Eh, nah, nah, nah I'm a, I'm a Eh, me We're a moving I'm a, I'm a Eh, me I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a So, it's I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a Eh, nah, nah, nah I'm a, I'm a We can, we can You're a, you're I'm a, I'm a We can, we can And then, you're I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a Eh, nah, nah, nah I'm a, I'm a 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 DJ Morning DJ Morning DJ I'm a, I'm a 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 DJ Morning DJ Morning DJ Morning I'm a, I'm a 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 I'm a, I'm a[1577.64]